Is it dark in here on purpose?
It's dark.
The lights are not on.
Those are, do you want those?
There you go.
Good evening. Welcome to the January 28th Washougal City Council Workshop Meeting. Jennifer, could you call the roll for us, please?
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Plinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Granley. Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
And Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Thank you. Before we get to public comments, we do have, under new business, you may have gotten an email today that we will be doing away with Item A1, the public hearing for the Schmid property that is pulled to a later date.
All right.
Is there anyone from the public this evening that would like to address council before we get started? Okay. Seeing then, we have our first item.
Mr. Mayor, could I just, I'd like to note that I will have to leave at 6:40 for a business complex.
Heck, we could be done with all this by then.
Okay.
No worries. Our first item this evening is a presentation from the Camas-Washougal Economic Development Association. Mr. Dennis, Mr. Hovey, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. As you recall, we were before you this last fall, in November 2012. One of the items we promised to bring back to you was a presentation on our performance measures. The board had, the Cuida board hired Edie Hovey and company to perform that analysis. We provided them a lot of our base data, and from there, they conducted the analysis. I'd like to have Eric Hovey come up and present his findings. These are the same findings that he presented to at our board meeting this last Thursday, and his report was unanimously adopted by our board. Eric?
Thank you. My name is Eric Hovey, and I'm the, have an economic and development consulting firm, Edie Hovey and Company, based in Vancouver. It's a privilege to kind of be able to provide you a brief synopsis of the work that we conducted, and I think that's, we also have provided a memorandum, providing a bit more detail about this. So, just let me start with a little bit of context in terms of the purpose and the approach that we took to conducting the analysis. The, we were asked by the Camas-Washougal Economic Development Association to perform an evaluation or review of their economic development performance through the end of 2012. This is set in the context of jobs goals that the organization has adopted. Basically, three related goals of a positive jobs balance of about 170 jobs per year to be created, including the recreation of 600 jobs that were lost in the Great Recession, and a five-year goal of about 1,400 net added jobs that would go through between 2011 and 2015. In terms of the specifics that we were asked to evaluate, there's some benchmarking that the organization has basically adopted, and that is to look at their performance in terms of the number of business contacts that are made, business revenues, job creation and retention, and payroll and household income, and then direct tax revenue benefits. For three of those measures, I would just note here that, for three of these, I'll get this right. Business revenues, job creation, payroll, and household income, we're not only looking at the direct effects of what happens directly on-site, but the economic multiplier, or the indirect effects that take place as spending occurs by direct on-site businesses elsewhere in the community, and as workers at those facilities also are spending elsewhere in the community. Some, just to, there's some, on the right-hand side of this, there are kind of a listing of the activities of Cuida, which I'm sure you're well aware of. I just think it's notable that the organization is, looks, among many purposes, to distinctive branding, which I think is important to set you apart from what else is happening regionally, and even in Clark County, because you do have some unique attributes. And then, a focus on retention and expansion, as well as attraction of new businesses. Let me move to talk a little bit about economic benefits, which should be on the next slide. We, or actually, business contacts, I should say, yeah. We, in reviewing the records of the organization through the end of 2012, there's basically about 37 contacts or firms and entities that the organization has been in discussion with in one fashion or another. Working with the organization, we've sort of categorized those activities into the following categories. Complete projects, those are ones that where investment was made and has been largely completed as of the year-end. Seven projects, seven projects that are underway, where there's been a commitment made, and that investment is moving forward, but not yet complete. Then there's active projects, and seven completed projects. Active projects, 15 or 16, that kind of is based upon one project that's sort of in the middle between active and underway, but with the job addition really to happen, probably most likely in 2013. And those are projects that are looking actively to do things. They've not, maybe not yet made a full commitment, or are not underway with their investment to date. About five dormant projects, in other words, where the trail's gone cold, they could come back, they may not. And about two projects that are not likely to come back in the future. We really focus, for the purposes of our economic analysis, on the ones that are complete and underway, where there are measurable impacts. That's 14 projects. Of those 14, about five are new to the area. Four are relocations, another four represent expansions, and one represents a restart within the community. And the industry, the activities cover a range of kind of economic activities, industrial, including manufacturing, tech-related, research and development, construction and distribution firms, some service-related firms, as well as combo, what I would call combo firms, a good example being Micro Brewery that does both retail and actual manufacturing on-site. The range of, none of these are major job creators in and of themselves. I think the largest firm has about 55 employees total, and the largest investment had added about 30 jobs. All but two of these 14 firms have added jobs with the investments that they've made in the community. Let me go ahead and talk about economic benefits now. So, we focused the economic benefits on these 14 firms, but out of those 14 firms, we differentiated to take a kind of a conservative view. We differentiated between existing activity in the area right now, and what was really sort of net new or added activity within the area. And that really then became the basis for looking at the indirect or multiplier activities, which is really only on that new activity, not what was already taking place. So, just to walk you through what this means in terms of a job side, these 14 firms had existing activity, about 92 jobs. They're adding about 120 jobs for a total of around 212 jobs with the existing activity and the new activity. Our calculations of indirect benefits, the multiplier effects, is based upon this added activity number only. That gets you to a total of 216, which is the added activity plus the indirect, and that's a jobs multiplier of about 1.8 jobs, meaning about four-fifths of a job that's indirect and induced activity within the community in addition to the direct activity. We looked at those multipliers actually very specific to the types of business activity. Industrial firms or traded sector firms that sell goods and services outside the community tend to have a higher multiplier, in many cases than, say, service firms. So, that, and we did, we went through the same sort of analysis, the multiplier analysis, not only for jobs, but also looking at payroll and at business revenues. The jobs numbers really are ones that were provided by Cuida. We use the, what's known as the IMPLAN, Input Output Model, which is a nationally recognized model that provides county-specific data on the interrelationships within the local economy as a basis for making those estimates of added payroll and firm revenues. So, the results, when, kind of get to bottom line here, there's 216 net added jobs, direct and indirect, that I mentioned. Those jobs are paying about $56,800 on average per year. That's well above the Clark County average wage, which is a little less than $43,000 per year. Total payroll is $12.3 million per year in terms of added payroll that wasn't there beforehand, and the firm revenue, about $36.5 million. I would just note that in terms of both the revenue, that there can be variation by firm. We really base this not on, we don't know specifically what each individual firm is doing, but we're basing it on typical revenues per firm for these particular types of industries. Next slide. In tax terms of tax revenues, the 13 of the firms have made capital investments representing $26.65 million. That's to date through year-end 2012. There are additional firms that are leasing property, including some that are leasing from the port that are subject to leasehold tax. So, when we went and made tax estimates, we looked at property tax plus the leasehold excise tax. That comes to a total of about 300, just a little under $395,000 per year in added property and leasehold tax annually. It's primarily property tax. You can see the breakout here of how we calculated the property tax based upon the added assessed value, the rate per thousand, and then that leads to the total annual tax revenue. One thing I would mention is that there are varied rates, as I'm sure you're well aware, for property tax within the city of Washougal and the city of Camas. And so, we applied the rates that were applicable for each firm, and then basically took the sum of all of those. The taxes, as I say, vary by location, but they do include revenues to the city, or the two cities, county, state schools fund, and then port and local school districts. So, that's kind of the synopsis of where we're at. Last slide. That's really it. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments that you would have. Again, thank you.
I think it was the first or second slide where you had the C for Camas and the U.
Oh, yeah, I should have explained that.
How many of those U's become W's?
Yeah, well, actually, they're not Camas. I should have explained that. The C was for completed projects, those are the first seven, and the U is for ones that are underway.
Okay, so where are the Washougal businesses in that, that will come into our Washougal district?
Yeah, this is a combination of Camas and Washougal. We haven't broken it out here, but Paul, I'm sure.
I'll go ahead and help Eric out on this one. Fastenal is one where they started off looking in Camas, but then ended out at the port. Sapphire Materials is out at the port. Amnesia Brewing, Foods and Seasons, and Brew Pub 3. So, it's one, two, three, four, five. So, five of the 14 were directly occurring within the port area.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, I should have explained that when I was going through. I forgot.
Same question Joyce.
What is Brew Pub 3?
That's, in some cases, Paul, these are still people being worked with, and there may or may not be a name that's disclosed, so Paul?
Right. There are a couple of these, like Biotech 1 and Brew Pub 3, where even though they're underway, they don't want to disclose quite yet to the community who they are. In the case of like Biotech 1, they are building a new facility and leaving part of their functions at their existing location, and they're in the process of renegotiating their lease, and so they don't necessarily want to unfold their full hand. So, Brew Pub 3 is really another brewery that's located elsewhere in Washington State, and they have a great relationship with a distributor here. And so, the distributor has some space for them to come into, is kind of a beachhead into the community. And they're actively looking for other space. They would rather be in the downtown area, but they're just trying to get here first, up and going, and so forth. And I would also say, it says 37 contacts, but what's not included in that are a number of businesses where we just do site visits. You know, Foods and Seasons, to begin with, was just a site visit, and then soon after that, they started deciding they wanted to expand. Their Festus, that's out at the port, I've gone out there for a site visit, but yet they haven't done anything either. So, many times, we're just out trying to nurture those relationships, see what types of needs they have. If they have needs around workforce development, then we'll usually hand them off to like Southwest Washington Workforce Development Council. If they need help securing like an environmental consultant, we'll try to steer them in terms of what they need. We won't steer them to a direct company. We try to stay out of that, because we don't want to get at odds with other companies out there as well, so.
I actually, I just have one more. I just wondered, it says in the figure report, it said facilitating. Businesses and taking advantage of business incentives. I just wondered what type incentives those were.
Yeah, so if you're looking at manufacturing, some of the companies we're dealing with are buying equipment. And if they go and get pre-certified with the state, you can't do it retro. I just had that discussion with someone today, that they already bought the equipment, and they thought they could go retroactively after they were told that they couldn't. But you can get sales and use tax exemption. So, if we've got a company that's moving from outside of Washington State coming in, typically, you would have to pay sales and use tax on that equipment. And in some cases with manufacturing, that's millions of dollars in tax revenue that they would have to pay. But if they get the certificate upfront, they can remit that to their vendor, which then remits it back to DOR, Department of Revenue, and they don't have to collect sales tax. Same thing on buildings for manufacturing. You take like Amnesia Brewing, they've made use, for their equipment on the brewing process, made use of that sales tax exemption. There wasn't enough in it for the building improvements for West to make use of it. They just thought it was more trouble than it was worth, so they didn't take advantage of that program.
Yeah, I would just note one other thing about the sales and use tax on construction. We did not make, include estimates of that sales and use tax, knowing that there are some firms that have benefited from abatement or deferrals of that. So, that's again a conservative number, because we focused only on the property tax-related revenues. And in, for manufacturing firms, in terms of ongoing sales tax, it's really typically not as great as it would be for, say, retail because of out-of-state sales. So, we didn't, so we're probably leaving, there's probably money that's accruing, but we didn't try to estimate that.
Kind of had a question. I just want to follow up with that on whether the item is, if it's a firm that's going into an existing site, someone's already paid those upfront developer exactions. Someone's already paid for the traffic impact fees and the water and the sewer meters and so forth. So, if they're just using existing infrastructure, we've usually sat down with city staff and tried to do some type of accounting procedure. Sapphire Plant's a great example of what's already been paid in the till, so to speak, and at what point through an expansion or investment, when they ramp up, do they reach that ceiling and then start to have to pay increment after that? And so, part of that is just recognizing what's already been paid as an incentive for using existing sites.
Just curious how the process works. For instance, I met with Adam Taylor, who's with Lone Wolf.
Yeah.
And he's working to fill the buildings that he represents, that Lone Wolf owns. Are you working in tandem with him, or do you work outside of it?
So, it's both. It's both. So, there are times where, let me pick on Fastenal again, where they said, "We just want to be in the Camas-Washougal area." And so, I collected, I just put a call out to a lot of the brokers, I knew what Adam had, and they told me the specs that they were looking at. And so, I gave them a listing of the inventory to try to see if they wanted to locate. They ended up out at the port eventually, but there are others where we're working with Adam. Amnesia was one where Adam, early on in the process, was trying to understand what he could do with that site. And so, we sat down with him, just made notice of the programs he might be able to make use of. And then, he included us in on a staff meeting that he had here.
So, I guess what, basically, you're not in competition with each other then?
Absolutely not.
Because both of your goals are to fill the empty buildings and coax people in. Because he had told me about somebody, a couple is making a, is it a breakfast and lunch just across from Amnesia? But I, and so, when I didn't see that, I thought, hmm, you must.
And there are some things that he's working on that we won't count. I might put him onto a lead or something like that, but if he's the one that's totally servicing them, we're just, we're not going to worry about it. We just figure more is better.
More is better.
Especially when it comes to business.
Yeah, thank you.
First of all, thank you for the assessment. We badly needed it. I'd like to talk a little bit about the assessment. Can you define for me what retaining a job means?
Retaining a job is basically, if a job's in place and where the company is thinking that they might relocate elsewhere, if they can't find a suitable site locally, that would be an example of retention.
How do you identify that?
You know, I think you identify that in consultation and discussion with the company, as you kind of find out what the, you know, what their needs are and why they're looking at either expanding or thinking of locating elsewhere. And it's, in many cases, it's not a clear black and white line, but I think overall, we, I know that the Cuida has made, kind of identified what they view as being kind of the major kind of purpose of the investment, whether it's new investment or relocation or expansion, that sort of thing.
Like CID Bioscience, if they wouldn't have been able to find a facility here in the Camas-Washougal area, they would have left and probably started looking over in Vancouver. Many of these companies, they want to look here first if they're already here, but they're being courted by other property owners from around the county. And I believe, Eric, when you counted new jobs, those were new to the region or newly created jobs. So, even if you take like Robertson and Olson, who moved from Vancouver into Camas Meadows, they just moved their corporate headquarters, those jobs are just counted as retained jobs. They're not counted as an added job, even though it's new activity here for the Camas-Washougal area. We're still just counting as retained, to try to stay conservative.
Well, I think your data is a lot better than it is at the federal level, but the chicanery that's taken place at the federal level over the last four years is what causes me the concern. And I'd like to look more deeply into this. I'll come out and talk with you about it.
Perfectly.
The, I noticed in here that Sowita provided specific info for this report, and the direct benefits were based on the Sowita inputs. The indirect benefits were based on the IMPLAN software.
Right.
I don't know anything about the IMPLAN software. Can you tell me how long it's been around? Who considers it valid?
IMPLAN was actually originally developed as a cooperative venture between the University of Minnesota and US Forest Service. It is, there are several different software kind of providers in the United States that sort of dominate the market for this sort of economic analysis. IMPLAN is one of them. It's, it's probably one of the best recognized. It has some advantages over some others in that it's, the data is updated annually, and it's, you can get it down to the county level. In fact, you can go sub-county with the data. It's very user-friendly in terms of its software, and it covers about 440 sectors of the economy. When we look at Clark County, for example, not all 440 are represented, but they provide a consistent format for doing that. It's, we'd certainly be happy to provide you more information about IMPLAN, as well as the other sort of input-output firms. But it's been around, I frankly can't remember how long, but it's been out there, yeah, probably since about then. It's been out there quite a while.
1970s.
Yeah, and I appreciate your offer. I'd like very much to see more information about it.
My two primary concerns are, as a former data processing manager, garbage in, garbage out. And the other thing is, everything depends on the methodology, but more importantly, on the assumptions. I'd like to see the assumptions that go into that model.
Right.
I've seen an awful lot of models that assume the probable way, and therefore, don't really give you any data. I'm not in a position to judge the validity of your conclusions, but I would like to take a look at the software in which you base those conclusions. And I note that everything goes back to the data provided by Sowita. I'm concerned about how this information here, and this is a very, very detailed report, satisfies the requirement that this council added after the contract was approved, and therefore, it wasn't part of the contract. We ask for data that's used by the state of Washington to evaluate economic development projects. And they weren't ideal data, but they were satisfactory data. And I didn't see these addressed in here. Dave, can you help me out there?
I don't have the ILA in front of me that has that section where it cites the RCW, where the port has a requirement to receive.
And my apologies for not getting to you earlier with my question. I just came up with it about 5:00.
Right. We can certainly take a look at that.
Okay. I'd appreciate it. I think that would help me understand this better. We've touched on this, some of the questions have touched on the issue of, what's the distribution of economic benefits with the projects that you've got here? How many of these are specifically tied to Washougal? We've talked about the ones tied to the port. How many of them are specifically tied to Washougal? We've got the Amnesia. We've got the Fastenal, I believe. Are there any others?
Sapphire.
Which one?
Sapphire.
Sapphire, okay.
Foods and Seasons, which actually started off as an 8,000-square-foot expansion. I believe they're at 16. And they're actually, could be a little bit larger than what we calculated initially. Mill City was starting here. Couldn't find adequate property. Brew Pub 3 is here. We got our five there.
That's a five. There's five.
Yeah.
I have a list right here.
Right.
Good. Thank you. And I'm always glad to see another food store show up in Washougal. That much should be pretty obvious.
Foods and Seasons is a quite the story, so that's one that, where they started out of their house, just with an idea. And over time, it's grown from what, just John and his wife, to his kids, to having several employees.
Because I understand that they market local produce.
They do. So, they started off with exotic mushrooms and just going to high-end restaurants. They're now taking that product and going to high-end grocery stores across the US. And then, they've gotten into seafood, primarily salmon, and they buy salmon from the Native Americans throughout Washington State, repackage that here, and ship it overseas. So, it's an export. And that's. Mushrooms are too exotic. Not too exotic, exactly. They won't compete with recently passed law.
But they don't do retail, do they?
They don't do retail. It's all wholesale.
So, we can't.
And the processing, and because they take the raw product and package it into something, they do something to it, basically cut it up and package it and so forth. It actually counts as processing, so it actually is manufacturing, and therefore, equipment and any building improvements would be sales taxing them. So, that's a great incentive for them to expand, because now they don't have to pay that 8.4%. It's a lot easier to get those construction budgets.
I have a question. It's probably more directed towards Paul. Out of the 14 businesses listed there, only five are really locating here in Washougal, mostly at the port. And I'm just kind of wondering, in your opinion, what's holding us back? And what's, we've been paying into this program as long as Camas has, and an equal amount? And I'm just curious to know kind of what's holding us back.
The way I would look at this is, that's a great question, because anyone would look at that and say, five versus nine. There's a difference there, right?
Okay.
Just call it out, call it what it is, right?
Double.
In terms of added jobs, true added jobs, it was probably more well-balanced, because you take like Robertson and Olson, that went to Camas, but we didn't count any jobs there because, or any of the existing jobs there, because that was just a transference within the county. And we're looking at even transfences within the region, to be quite frank. What's holding back Washougal? I would say, what's holding back Washougal, I think this last year proved to be a great year in terms of planning. Port is opening up their next phase of the industrial park, and we're already starting to get interest on that. I believe, without putting the port on the spot. We've got some activity that could announce this year.
Yes.
Definitely.
What was it, what was your statement?
There should be some activity that's announced this year. Look at the waterfront. That is something that you have that Camas doesn't. It just is not happening. And there's all this pre-planning that's gone into place. And so, as this economy is turning around, that is going to pay dividends back to the community. I think, you know, as the housing market starts to solidify, that's one thing that, and I've talked to Trevor about this, one thing that I would concentrate on. and I've talked to Trevor about this, one thing that I would concentrate on is trying to add some rooftops to the downtown area, as part of creating this kind of economic hub here. And I think downtown is right, as close as it is to the waterfront. You've got a great investor down here that's willing to do a great product, it's not just in here to make a dime. Obviously, they want to make a profit, but they have some community goals in mind as well. So I think Washugal was hit the hardest in this recession. If you go back and look at the jobs lost across each of the communities in Clark County, on average, most communities only lost 5%, and still 5% is a lot if you're the one that lost the job, right? Washugal lost 17% of its job base during this recession. So it's starting from being behind, much further behind everyone else, but like basic physics, inertia, I think with all the planning and all the investment dollars that are being put in place by the port and Wes and others, the future is probably pretty bright here. And I think you'll start to see larger projects happening here.
You use the phrase, put in some rooftops. What does that mean?
So housing, so.
So you're talking about housing downtown, residential?
Definitely.
I think too, there are different ways that you can look at that list. There are different ways you can look at the two communities. Camas is land-wise twice as large as the city of Washugal. I mean, there are a lot of just pure facts of where they're larger. There's going to be more opportunities to go there. But truly, actually, you know, if you take another factor out of there, we're at five and five. I wouldn't be real concerned, I'm not concerned with it at all, but I mean, when you've got companies that are already locating onto properties they've already got, Fisher Two is on the list, but they already have Fisher One. They bought enough property to do all of their stuff on there. They were never coming to Washugal. Robertson and Olson, they own the entire Camas Meadows development and industrial park and golf course. They weren't going somewhere that they didn't own the property. Sharp Solar is already on Sharp's property.
IMT Bodycoat.
IMT Bodycoat is an expansion of an already existing business that wasn't going to go somewhere else. They're building on land they've got. So if you take some of those out of there, you're pretty much even up.
And Sapphire is a good one, where if they didn't get their state permit, they would have left. And they probably would have went to Tennessee. Their investors were ready to pull out and just scrap the investment that they had here.
I think the one that we could certainly look at in there is the Mill City Brewing. You know, as many of you know, they were looking desperately, they really wanted to be in this community and in the downtown.
They're the ones that started it, and they're back in the garage.
Yeah.
We just don't have the inventory of property that's priced at the right place, or a building that exists that they could easily move into. And they started looking in other places, because they wanted to spend their money and want to spend it now and getting going, so.
And even the property they secured wasn't on the market. They just knocked on the door and said, are you willing to sell? There was a vacancy that they could have been a tenant, but they really wanted to own their asset, and so that's how it came to be.
How many of the benefits described in this report can be attributed directly to and solely to Sowita efforts?
I think the, you never know for sure, because there are many factors that go into a company's decision process, so we've not made any effort, any attempt to try to sort that out. It's a little bit like the role of a real estate broker with residential sales. There are many factors of why people make a purchase of a house, and working with that broker may be one of them, but if that broker weren't there, they might have purchased the house anyway. I think what we can say is that these were all transactions in which the organization had some active involvement.
So a follow-up question, if I may. Paul, are most of your efforts joint efforts with other organizations?
No, they're not. Robertson and Olson was pretty much just us and the city of Camas. That was, Fisher Investments Two was just us and Camas. Fastenal came in through a lead through the Chamber, and we worked with the port to put them out there. I actually gave them a list of inventory. It came down to a site in Camas versus the port, and the rate that the port gave them, no one could touch in this marketplace, so that's what landed them out there. CID Bioscience was a joint effort between us and CRDC, and we just basically, Bonnie provided some services, and I provided other services. That was one where they were securing a site. It had some environmental issues. Previous owners had removed an oil tank and forgot to get it certified, and so that almost crashed the sale. And I was able to at least get cooler heads to prevail in that, and get people to kind of breathe and take an extra couple of weeks. They got everything certified and made sure they got the right stuff at the state, and they were able to complete that transaction. And then we've provided some services past that, in terms of helping them understand some of the city codes, making sure the city understood what they were trying to do onsite. And then when it came to like the sales tax exemptions, making sure that they took full advantage of what they could. That's one where they have office, administrative, so there's no sales tax deferral program for just straight-up office. But the CMC machines and all the R&amp;D do have sales tax exemption, and so they basically had to go through and measure out all their square footages, look at their total investment, and took the greater of the benefit for what the state allowed. So it varies. I was out at, I don't mind sharing this, I was out at WR Cartridge, Washugal River Cartridges. They do ammunition out at the port. And the service that we're providing really is just to help them understand that when they buy new machinery, that they go get the certificates ahead of time to don't pay that sales and use tax. And then they're in desperate need of hiring people. And so I brought Work Source Development Council in to do a site tour and to kind of understand the types of skills that they would require, so that they can put some job placement ads out and try to find them the right type of help.
Can you tell me how your efforts work in sync with Lone Wolf Investments? Adam Taylor, for example?
So if you take like Amnesia, that was one where Adam had identified Amnesia up front. They kind of had a sense of where they wanted to put them in the downtown. We actually met with city staff to talk about all the past traffic impact fees that have been paid. We also looked at, if you remember right, looked at, there was a gravel parking lot there, which meant that was impervious surface already, so that doesn't calculate into the stormwater requirements. And so just going through that checklist, helping Adam go through that checklist to make sure that he understands what he's going to have to pay for, what he's not going to have to pay for, and then getting them the information and the applications to submit for the sales tax exemption on the equipment. They decided to fill them out themselves. Some clients will actually help them fill that out, or just call it the state, and we'll just go through the screens online and get it submitted that way.
Thank you.
So each project, it just, it varies, and some projects need a lot of handholding, and others, they just want to be pointed in the right direction.
I wanted you to understand, sir, that my questions tonight are not hostile to your report. I think it's a good report. I think it's a good step in the right direction. When this entire issue came up, it was rushed into being without first deciding what the evaluation, performance evaluation criteria would be, which in my experience is a terrible way to do contracting. So what you're seeing tonight is my heartburn with that, and we appreciate your role in trying to resolve that dilemma. How do we evaluate this issue? It's not an easy thing to do. You know yourself how difficult it is to get a handle on something like this. Some of the figures are squishy, and there's a lot of disagreement in the economic community about how these projects should be evaluated. So, good job. Thanks for making the effort, and thanks for the help you provided us to better understanding how we're doing on this particular effort, which is critical to us.
Well, thank you. And if there's more information that we can provide about specifics and details, I know I'm happy to do that, working with Paul and with you.
On the wall out here are all the business cards of people in the city, and mine are there. I'm assuming they have my latest address, which is frontier.com as opposed to Verizon.com out there. But if you could send that to me by email, the Implan information, I would be very grateful. Yeah, what I can do?
What I can do is, they've got, I think, a fairly detailed website, and I can send you the link to that, so you get an understanding of how their data works.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of comments. This is a fairly new effort, and one of the realities about a business that's thinking about locating or relocating is that by and large, they want to do it yesterday. There is some space available in Camas Meadows today. There's more ground that you could build on. In fact, in, I think, one of those buildings, they went from permit to occupancy in about six months, which has got to be a record.
Right. You can do that in both cities, though. I mean, that's one of our competitive advantages, is not a lot of bureaucracy.
But we don't have a Camas Meadows yet. As was mentioned, the property down on the river, that used to be the Hamilton Mill. There's a big piece of that that has been taken by the port and will have a guaranteed public access to the river. There's another big piece that is in the hands of a private developer, and I'm not at all privy to what's being planned there, but the developer is one that has done some large projects here in Clark County. So I think that over the next few years, we can see that there will be some land that you really can put a substantial building on in about six months, from permit to occupancy. The port at what's called the Steigerwald Employment Center has put in roads, they need one more tip of paving. It started raining before they get the last one in. But there's water, sewer, electric, cable, internet, all of that is out there, and sometime this spring, that will be ready for new businesses. And that's really our first industrial land in Washugal to come online in a while. That, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, that first phase is about the first third?
Correct, it's 40 acres.
So there's 40 acres that will be pad-ready sometime this year. So that is part of what's been going on, and part of what has been going on is frankly is the close work between Mitch and the planning department, and the public works department, and Paul, and the port, all to make that happen out at Steigerwald. Part two. Something like Sapphire Materials, fascinating situation. You had a company that was in that location making Sapphire Crystals. They were taking water from the drinking water system and using it to cool their process, and then dumping it into the sewer system. They had a brain something or rather, and rather than putting that permit to dump that water into the sewer system in abeyance, they sent it back to the state. So when the new operator came in and wanted to do essentially the same thing, which is to take water from the drinking water supply, run it through stainless steel pipes that do not touch the process, it's cooling water only, and then dump it into the sewer system, that required a new permit from the state, and the state said nine months. Nine months, they will have been in Tennessee for six months by then. So the mayor and Paul and the port got on the phone and jumped in the car and drove to Olympia, and met with one of the people in the governor's office, and phone calls were made, and the permit came through in much less than nine months. Those are some of the kinds of things that go on in the background in terms of services that are provided that might not show up in a report like this. But without them, Sapphire Materials would be in Tennessee, not over in Washugal. I guess that's it.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lampton, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
I would just add to this, as I head out the door here. You know, economic development is a team sport, and we talked about what Paul did with Adam at Lone Wolf Development, whatever. It was a team effort. And it is all of us in this room to make this thing work. And coming to your thing on what's happening in Camas v Washugal, again, I think, again, we're counting on the rising water floating all above, but I think, again, more to your point, 98% of the port's assets are here in Washugal. It's 120 acres at Steigerwald, which is the only level industrial zone property in a county. It's the largest piece. So we have a big advantage there. Secondly, we have 40 acres total on the waterfront to be developed. 13 of them are in private hands, and 27 are in public hands. So I think that going forward, near term, Washugal will probably see more new development than any other community in the county. This is my take. Don't get bogged down in the details, Ed. Performance is everything.
Thanks, Mark.
Exactly what I'm looking for. How do we evaluate it? Okay, moving.
I'll start to, you and Eric, okay?
Moving to community development. Mitch, you've got an ordinance for us on fee holidays?
Yes, I do. Sorry, yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. We spoke about this briefly over the weekend. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, again, really diving into it. You have the information, the draft ordinance, but kind of hit the highlights here. Maybe. Oh, I jumped all the way to the recommended action. There we go. What we'll discuss, really the what, where, and when of the ordinance itself, some of the changes that I'll be talking, or that will be in your agenda build next week, and then the recommended action. So the what, where, and when. What we're talking about, having a fee waiver for the planning, building, fire, which I didn't mention this weekend, but it is one of them, and engineering fees would be waived under the fee holiday. What it applies to and where is the commercial, industrial, and the mixed-use development within the city. And when it would end, we're proposing that it would sunset on December 31st of this year. Couple of the changes. One, we talked about, the ordinance, we want it to be an emergency ordinance, will become effective immediately, so Tuesday morning, businesses and anybody can take advantage of that fee holiday. So that is one of the proposed changes that you'll see reflected in the ordinance when you get it. I also had some conversation with our attorneys, good conversation. We're just going to be a little more specific about listing out those fees, the fee tables of what will be waived. We're going to wordsmith a couple of other things, but shouldn't be anything really of substance that would be concerning. But so I just wanted you to know that you'll see some of those modifications in the draft ordinance that you get later in the week. Other than that, the recommended action is to, will be to read the ordinance by title only, and to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Questions from Phil's side?
Just a quick question. I noticed that it said that it ended at 12:00 PM on December 31st.
That's probably just my typing.
I just wondered if that was coming out that way.
Did the ordinance say that? Okay, then.
Well, the one we had today on our, in our agenda, did say that, yeah.
I will make that.
We're going to close at noon on New Year's Day.
We're going to close it noon on New Year's Day.
That's what I was hoping. So I just...
No, thank you. I'll make note of that, and then...
Little detail.
Any other items from council? Okay. Thank you, Mitch.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, Mayor Gardener, Council.
Do you have a resolution for us on strategic planning?
Yes. Before you, this evening, you have a draft resolution in regards to the strategic plan roadmap specifically to adopt and endorse the plan for the Washougal community as well as the municipality. It also references the grassroots effort and community-based participation in the public engagement campaign dating back to fall of 2011 through 2012. It also references regular review of our policies and long-term planning as we move forward, continue to revisit those, as well as the strategies, and then the alignment with the identified mission, vision, and values that have been offered up by the community and then synthesized through the advisory committee. So with that, any questions on the draft resolution and its current form?
Because I understand that you're asking the council to commit to letting this be the guiding light for the council for the next X number of years.
Yes, the guiding document. The horizon for this specific roadmap is 10 years. The original intent was to look 25 to 30 years out. Obviously, with the climate that we're in, as far as the economy, that wasn't as feasible to try to accomplish. So it's more of a 10-year and a guiding document. And as we look forward to Phase Two in implementing the plan, and specifically the communication pillar in partnership with Portland State University, we look at the specifics of implementation and honing in on strategies, goal strategies, as well as indicators, measurement on successes.
Well, I'm certainly willing to be guided, but I'm not willing to be committed and I'll save the rest of my questions for later. Thanks very much.
Any other items from council? Paul?
Just a quick mention, Dave. As a matter of law, this council cannot commit any future counsel to anything.
I appreciate that. I'm more worried about this council. Thanks.
Any other items?
Yes, question. Trevor's been on payroll leading this. So once, if, you know, if we pass this, what happens with Trevor and that position? Does he continue to stay as an employee, working on this project for the next 10 years, or it ends now?
We're already working into a transition mode, bringing Trevor back into Public Works Director.
I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to hear that from the horse's mouth.
He's been there from day one. I think if you, well, in...
Making sure.
In my apologies, because you weren't here when we originally went through all of this. Those original discussions where both of the department heads that were taken off the line would be coming back to those departments in those positions once this was completed, so. Dave?
There's one I just have to add here. You and I and Joanne worked for some time on the mission statement. And when the mission statement finally came out, there was a mission statement and a vision statement. The vision statement was based, I think, on the four pillars, which are godmother and apple pie. I mean, who can be against communication and community engagement and core services and economic development? But when the final document came out, there was no specific mission statement. The mission statement said essentially, implement the vision. And the vision was the four pillars. And although the mayor and the administration and the staff have been kind enough to engage with me on what constitutes a mission, and narrow down the essential items, the mission essential items, and the important items, and everything else, I haven't seen that in writing yet. I was hoping to get that out of this document. And without that, I'm really reluctant to commit to this document as a guiding light for the next X number of years. And that's, among other things, my concern about it. My other concerns are on the, in the area of the way it was put together, participation. And I applaud you for walking, or pounding the pavement and getting the businesses of Washougal involved. As I remember, you talked to all of them. Nice going. In terms of the number of people who were involved, I see the usual suspects involved there. I didn't see a broad base there. And so I'm concerned about that. And that, again, contributes to my reluctance to commit to this thing. And I, Mr. Mayor, I think I may have interrupted you there.
No, I was, on the mission statement, Trevor, correct me if I'm wrong, your, the presentation two weeks ago had both the vision statement and the mission statement in there, did it not?
Yes. At the workshop, and then it was briefly put up at the retreat.
But the mission statement, it says essentially, implement the vision.
I think in looking at the mission, and specifically, I think, the conversations we've had directly, councilmember shoemakers around core services, and clearly defining core services, so as we look forward to Phase Two and the implementation, we'll have clarity around those core services and exactly what those are and how they're delivered.
And this weekend was an excellent education on that. And I thank the staff for that.
And in regards to the public engagement campaign, there was an outreach of 1,300, which included the walk and talk with business owners throughout the city, citywide, as well as outreach at port concerts and farmer's market and other functions downtown, high school events, sports. We also had a phone survey. I think you're diving into maybe the qualitative versus the quantitative crunching numbers on exactly the socioeconomics and the outreach effort to be able to poll that or extract that. But we did have a phone survey that we were assisted on by an intern from the University of Portland. And there were 500 water utility accounts that ended in the same last number for random. And so those were queried and weren't a specific part of town. So we felt that 1,300 contacts via phone, electronic survey, face-to-face, walk and talk was a fairly solid effort as far as the public engagement campaign.
Portland State has advised you very well about what constitutes a valid survey.
Any other items from council? Trevor, thank you.
Thank you.
We're now at that opportunity in the agenda for, again, for anyone from the public that would like to address council. Okay, seeing none, going to mayor's report. I have just one item for you, and that's a reminder, tomorrow evening, there is the RFA committee meeting, 5:30 over at Camas City Hall. I think we've made that about as open as possible to the media for any additional council members that would like to sit in the audience for that meeting tomorrow. Are there any items from council? Dave?
Two comments, one on the PSA for the SOWIDA. We were rushed into this contract when we first did it without developing the performance evaluation criteria. And as I indicated earlier, this is not good contracting procedure. We're now seeing the results of that oversight because personally, I can't trust the data that I'm getting for the reasons that I mentioned tonight. I think we need, in the interest of our constituents, to get an accurate assessment of SOWIDA's performance before, and I emphasize before, renewing the contract. I'd like to get it done beforehand this time. There's lots of activity there. Question is, how much of that benefit, of that activity benefits Washougal and to what degree? My second comment is, Mr. Mayor, thank you for pointing out that the Regional Fire Authority meets tomorrow. I chair that group, and I would look forward to a great deal of public participation in this process. We've had some 30 people there almost every time. I'd love to double or triple that, especially tomorrow, because we're going to find out from our contractor who did the study, Paul Lewis, the financial feasibility of doing this, and whether or not the model that we've selected works. There are a couple of models that he was evaluating. So come one, come all. Look forward to seeing you there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Dave. Other items? Paul?
Quick question, maybe Jennifer or Connie Jo or Karen can remind me. We have a Washougal Community Coalition meeting coming up. Is that this Thursday?
Thursday, yes.
This Thursday at 4:30. The Community Coalition is part of a statewide initiative to reinvent, I don't know what to call it. It's more than anti-drug programs, but specifically substance abuse is the centerpiece of it. The Coalition meets over at the Social Services Building on the second floor at 4:30, the fourth Thursday of every month. And anybody who wants to participate and shoulder some of the load, I'm sure we'd love to have you.
That's a fact, yeah.
The other thing worth mentioning is, at that same time, 4:30 Thursday afternoon, the Friends of the Gorge is opening their office over at the 1887 Main Building. There'll be reception over there. Friends of the Gorge is the spark plug behind this towns-to-trails initiative that hopefully will link basically every, all the way from Lackamas Lake to Maryhill Museum on the Washington side with a trail. And then the same on the Oregon side, from Lewis and Clark Park in Troutdale all the way out to, what, the Highway 97 Bridge, which is right across from Maryhill. So they will be there, and so I'm going to try to manage to make it to both, but I can only be in one place.
Connie Jo?
C-TRAN had an open house Thursday night at Fisher's Landing Transit Center. And the discussion is on Route 41, which is the limited bus service from Addie Street. It goes to Fisher's Landing, downtown Vancouver, and across the river to Delta Park. So the discussion is to, the proposal is that in May, they would remove the 41 Limited from the Washougal-Camas portion. People could pick up the bus anywhere in our town, take it to Fisher's Landing, and within a five-minute wait, is all that it would be, they would be able to transfer onto the, take the 40, the 92 that's already going, still going. They're not changing that service at all. They're really duplicative services going parallel or behind each other before. So if you eliminate the 41, you can hop on the 92, go to Fisher's Landing, and within five minutes, meet up with a connector that will take you to downtown Vancouver and across the river. So these are things that are being proposed. So if you have any input, you should go to the C-TRAN website. There's a place there you can actually electronically give your input. And of course, in this economy, we're certainly trying to cut corners in every agency we can. I see no drawback. If there's something I'm missing, I'd sure love to hear from you, because we will be considering this within the next few months. And so I appreciate your time and input on that. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'd like to thank the staff for a well-put-together planning session this weekend.
Yeah, it was good.
It was very informative and worthwhile, and thank you for your time.
I couldn't resist. I have to do a little personal plug. If you're on your way to the RFA meeting tomorrow, you need to go to Burgerville between 5:00 and 8:00 and mention Camas Christian Academy. My kids would greatly appreciate it.
All right. I didn't want to cook last night, tomorrow night anyways.
I don't either. Five to eight. Five to eight, yes.
Any other items from council? We are adjourned.
All right. Just looked at something written down.